This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Vader City Council. This Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, and it is 6:04 p.m.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Yeah.
Shulikoff, here. Mary Chai.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Mr. Ferguson did ask to be excused.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Excellent. We have a quorum. Pledge allegiance.
Scott, what did you do? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Castle Court subdivision. The public hearing is scheduled for May 16th at the next planning committee meeting. Code enforcement. So we discovered that our city parking codes were very insufficient to be able to properly enforce parking around the city. So we have the attorney working on a draft update for your review. Lewis County 911 annual fee. So every year we have to pay our fair share of Lewis County and 911 dispatch. For forever, our cost has been just a few thousand dollars. Last year was $4,017. This year, our cost is nearly $18,000, which was a big surprise. So we reached out to the county manager to try to understand what their methodology was for that. Looking at the fees, a lot of the small cities went up dramatically while the bigger cities in the county went down. We'd like to understand why that happened. Alpine Port left station re-ruled. So letters have been sent to the property, the two different property owners in that area to inquire whether they would be receptive to a utility easement. Waiting to hear back from them. May Day and Word and Park grand opening. Of course, that's May 4th parade, live band, games, and more. And of course, at the end of Mayo as well, the circus on May 30th, which is Alliance Club fundraiser. They have tickets available. I don't mind using the city to advertise for Lions Club events as they use those funds to for a variety of things with regard to food for those in need and presents for kids during Christmas. So they're a great community organization. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? I do have a statement for Mr. Ferguson. Like I said, he was unable to attend tonight, but he had a statement for the council regarding some of the city business. He said, so last week, he attended a demonstration of cloud permit by the by the vendor. He says, after our meeting with the cloud permit representatives, I feel that I am confident in supporting Vader contracting with them for those services. So fortunately, he has other commitments tonight. And then regarding the McMurphy Park project, says, I'm excited about getting septic and water for McMurphy Park. I'm on the fence about having an RV park. We have a beautiful rural space that I feel should be developed graciously. Our neighboring towns have those more developed spaces. I'm not against the plan that had been developed before my participation on council, but I'm pressing my concern. Just wanted to share that with the council. Moving on to agenda approval. I do not have any changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, same council meeting for April 24, 2024.
You have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion that we have a council meeting for April 10th, 2024.
You have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve minutes for April 10th. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'm making a motion to vouch for approval the end of April 2024 for $8,508 employees' salary for April 2024, $39,439.
If a motion by Mr. Hall to approve vouchers as written, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Scott. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Doug Parsons.
I wasn't sure. Jason, was that you or was that Mike that said aye? I only heard one of you.
That was me.
And me.
That was me.
Okay. Both affirmative. Thank you. It's unanimous. No special reports tonight. Any public comment tonight? We have a comment from Mr. Jovanich.
Some of those in the chambers have a ribbon coming tomorrow at noon at Toledo Lumber Department, which is the survival of young people from the boatwreck. And tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM, Toledo campus hosting a business after hours. And the topic is the Windrock Fiber Installment Study. If anyone's interested in that, that would come and be good.
All right. Thank you for that chamber update. Any other public comment? Okay. Moving on to city business. Item number one, council to consider the cloud permit, proposed contract. It's a three-year contract, $6,500 the first year, $5,000 for the second and third year. In the last council meeting, this was tabled so that council members could attend the presentation. And of course, Mike Ferguson did. And as I read from his statement, he was in support of that. He was actually, at the end of that meeting, he was very excited about that particular program. Any other discussion or questions?
Can we only do it for a year? Do we have to do it for three years? I mean, why don't we get it? We don't like it.
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
Is this in our budget?
It's not in our budget right now. We did not budget for it. We will have to do a budget amendment for it, but we certainly have the funds for it with the different building that's been going on. And the savings that we've been we've been seeing, that's it. Affording it is not a problem.
I make a motion that we approve the cloud permit, proposed contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the contract with cloud permit. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. More discussion?
I don't know enough about it. I don't think the citizens know enough about it. I'm trying to get it out there on social media, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, that's why we had the the meeting last week, so for to come and check it out.
I just wasn't notified soon enough.
And you can test it. Well, where you could, it doesn't really matter at this point. So. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the contract with cloud permit, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We'll make sure you get a chance to get on there and
see it.
check it out. It's pretty easy.
Yeah.
Moving on to item number two, council will discuss the draft McMurphy Park RCO grant plan. So in your packet is sort of a combination, item number two and three on the council agenda, approving resolution and the the plan. I gotta go all the way back through here. So I know this went out just an hour and a half, two hours ago. So the application authorization resolution is it does not it does not obligate the city to actually expend any funds. All it's doing is just saying, these people can apply for the grant on behalf of the city. So that's what the resolution is. But also in that packet is a little information about it. So right now, the this grant, if it was awarded, would provide 70% of the funding needed for the project. The remaining 30%, similar to the Wordham Playground project, will be a culmination of city REIT funds and other privately sourced grants. So the city would be able to go out and find other grants to help pay for our portion. The total project cost is estimated to be around $500,000 with RCO funding about 350 of that. As such, the city would be responsible for sourcing the remaining $150,000. We, during the Wordham Playground project, we used about $90,000 of REIT. And it's already re, it's already grown back to 114,000. So we're about 35,000 short of that. However, the city would not be required to expend any funds, assuming we got it until July of next year. REIT comes from the sale of homes. And as you know, we have plenty of homes being built in the city right now. So it's it's almost a certainty that we'd have 150,000 refund by then. And of course, we can supplement that with other grants so that we don't have to expend the full 150. So the project would bring water, city water to the park, install a septic system, install a new bathroom and shower facility, and create five RV sites with hookups. This will allow a permanent or seasonal camp host to provide security at the park, which has been an issue that the Parks Board's been fighting for a long time. And even with conservative usage, the revenue from the RV sites will fully fund the new city expenses for the water and power and create a new source of park revenue. That would be the the project. And of course, we will picture in there too, that kind of shows where it would be when you first drive in. The small area would be on the left as soon as you drive into the park. So it's well away from the creek area.
So if I vote yes on this, I'm voting yes, can we have a REIT?
Um, the application is next week. And so if you wanted to remove the RV park from from the plan, we could. I know the Parks Board was in support of that. That was part of their plan for, I think, what, four years ago when they first had these plans. That was the idea. So.
So that's in in the plan?
It could be removed from from the plans, and we could just try to go for a bathroom facility. That will affect the city. Long term, that would affect the city budget because, you know, there's gonna be, now there's gonna be water costs down there for the water hookup, you know, monthly water, monthly power, things like that. And so we wouldn't have a way to
Which the RV would help pay for that.
But who wants to give the RV away? That's Vader's park. That, I don't want a bunch of strangers staying in an RV park there. That's it's it's our park, our Vader's park, and we don't want strangers in.
I agree. I think having trailers down in parks would take away from the whole party experience.
Kind of city.
So my thought on it is you get people that, because it's not a long-term RV park, it's not like down at the end of 506, it's going to be a weekly stay. It's going to be tourists. It's going to be people coming into town, looking around, spending money, and leaving.
Yeah, that's what the that's what the Parks Board had, you know, it kind of fits in with, you know, what we've heard, what we heard from Mary Garrison a few weeks ago with regard to tourism and and getting people into town. It opens up the door for a park host so we can have security and maybe keep the park open year round, which will be good for the residents as well. They had it situated up above, away from the creek near the entrance, so that it would probably not even be visible from the creek area below.
My other concern right there, backing up to the neighbor's property, would be how close it would be to his house.
So it sounds like it sounds like the RV park isn't really supported by the council this this time. So at least.
I thought that we were trying to make the city grow and bring people to the city to visit.
Well, that's not the only way. I mean, how many, how many, how many RV spaces are there going to be? How much money is that really going to be with the litter, with the trash pickup, with having somebody down there?
So the plan had only five, with one of those being the host. So only four, a very, very
How much money, how much business? When we're all losing our private park, there's so many families that go there and use the swimming pool. It's nice to go there and have peace, not have people with their quads, their motorcycles, everything.
Quads, nobody's talking about quads and motorcycles.
Well, if they come with an RV, you don't think they're gonna come with that?
And then, of course, that would be one of the park host responsibilities.
They're gonna be so quiet and nice and stay inside their, no, they're not.
Well, obviously, they'd probably utilize the park facilities.
And who is going to be a park host that's going to want to stay down there for free? It's not going to be somebody with a nice million dollar. It's going to be a
Actually, it's it's fairly common for folks with nice RVs to camp host. I know the one in Mossy Rock. I know that I know the lady there that's a camp host. She has a brand-new RV. She's, that's where, I know the, I know the one in Chehalis, Alexander. The lady there has a newer, has a brand-new RV.
Not a poor space.
And so I know that it's, it's, there's plenty of people that are interested in doing it. And along with the rules that the park board would create, you know, there'd be limits on the the age of the RV, there'd be rules. And that's why you'd have a park host, so you could make sure that people are following the rules.
Yeah, I don't see a problem. I don't see a real problem with that few spaces. It should be easier to enforce. I think the purpose wouldn't need to look that much there. I'm kind of leaning towards it.
Yeah, I'm leaning against it.
Jason, are you there, Jason?
What's that? What's that, Randy?
Do you have any feelings about this?
You want an RV park?
No. Well, I don't like it when you call it an RV park. It's just gonna be camps, camp spaces. Yeah. Going to be a long-term.
It gives a negative potential to it.
It's not, it's not long-term. It's
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if they're there a week, then the next people are there a week, then the next people, that's still long-term. Even if it's not the same people, it's still long-term. It's our private little park.
I think we have the votes up.
I don't care. I don't, I'd say.
I'm gonna approve, approving the resolution 7-224, the Murphy Park RCO application authorization.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve resolution 07-2024 for the McMurphy Park RCO application authorization. Well, let's divide the two up. This would just be for the, the resolution does not lock us into whether we have an RV park. The resolution is simply approving the listed people to apply for the grant. So and we can, we'll keep talking about what we're going to apply for after we get passed this resolution then, since we have a motion for the resolution. Do we have a second for the application authorization?
Second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion just on the the application authorization resolution?
I think I said without that.
Right. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving resolution 07-2024, McMurphy Park RCO application authorization, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So moving back to what we're going to apply for. Like I said, the deadline for this is next week. And so we'll we'll put in an application this week. I just want to make sure that the the city council is obviously in in support of whatever we're gonna, we're gonna apply for. So it sounds like at least half the folks that are currently on here. And then even what Mr. Ferguson said in his letter to council, that he was on the fence about the RVs. Sounds like the RVs are not in support by the majority of the council. So.
I, I also wonder if Mike, like Jason, because RV park is not a long-term thing. And I would not be wanting a long-term resident staying down there. But when it's a vacation spot for people to come and enjoy our city and spend money, then I'm all for that. And I think that that, if it's the name, is that, is it just a name for you, Jason, that threw it off? Was anybody?
Yeah, when you call it, when you call it an RV park, it sounds like they would get something like out by the freeway, an RV park like that. So that's what went through my head.
Yeah, I don't want that either. It's a McMurphy campground or camp sites for RVs for a hookup.
So yeah, it's just, it's just five small pull, well, not small, five pull-through spots for RVs at the top of the hill when you first drive in on the left. So it would all, it would all be in that corner when you first come in on the left-hand side. That's, that's where the five RV spots would be. And one of those is a camp host. So it's, it's very minimal.
I think it makes sense.
I don't.
All right. And you were asking about how much money could four spots make? I'm at a equestrian center in Missouri. We don't have sewer hookup. And it's $50 a night to park my RV here.
At 15% utilization on those four spots at $40 a night, it would generate about $10,000 a year in revenue.
Thank you. Yeah. Just make sure I get it back.
So, you know, 15% utilization is very, a very conservative number. You know, that would, that would, I mean, if we're open year-round, it would be easy to do more than that. Even if we were only open during the summer, you could get that level of utilization in just a matter of a few months. And again, you know, that, that would, that would, the idea is that that would pay for the the extra, excuse me, extra cost the city is going to have to absorb for having water down there, having maintenance for the the septic system, the power for the building. So.
Yeah, would, would that also allow us to have driving access to the year-round for everybody in the gatehouse?
Yeah. So that's what the Parks Board was thinking, is that we had a year-round camp host, we could keep it open year-round and have someone there to monitor monitor issues. And if anyone misbehaved, you know, they'd be there, they could take pictures of vehicles coming in and out and easily identify them. And so, yeah, this, the city, the citizens of the city would get enhanced usage of the park as well.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the Parks Board was kind of echoing what the council feels, is that they didn't want McMurphy to turn into a, into a giant campground, a giant RV park. That's why they were trying to keep the RV spaces to a minimum and in a place where they wouldn't impact the look and feel of the park, since they'd be all the way up at the top of the hill near the entrance.
But they will be using the swimming hole. They will be coming into the park.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
That'll be strangers. That'll be, this is Vader.
Yeah, absolutely. They're, they're, those four families would be using the, using the creek probably, just, just like the other, well, if you go down there in the summer, you know, there's 50 other families down there that are using it. And so this would add another four people, four families there from the RV park.
This thing makes it too commercialized. It's a park.
Does she not want the town?
Um, any other, well, so I guess I would I guess we should have a motion about what, what we apply for then. That way we can make sure we have the council's opinion. That way, when, assuming we actually got the, got the grant next year, when we had to start filling out some forms, council was in support of it. So does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion?
You mean, consider the application?
No, the application's fine, just.
Oh, that's why you didn't hear me. I thought you were ignoring me, Joe, but my mute button.
Not this time.
I make a motion that we approve the RV camp sites with the grant application.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to to approve our application. to approve our application with the RV site plan. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hall. More discussion about that?
How about public input?
Well, Parks Board talked about it extensively. And like I said, this is the same plan that we had, you know, four years ago when we applied for this, or, excuse me, two years ago. So alright, well, all, all those in favor of approving the application with the limited RV sites, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I think the other good thing about that is when somebody that lives in town doesn't have room and their family wants to come visit them, they, and they bring an RV, they can stay down at the park for a couple days and visit family. And so it is family down at the park. It just opens it up for everybody. I'm going to North Carolina right now and the closest RV park is over a half an hour away from my daughter's house. So I think it's great.
I'm gonna let Mark in my yard.
That's what all the neighbors want, is a bunch of RVs parked in the yards.
Well, you said they're only gonna be here briefly.
Well, along with this, assuming that it actually got done, there'd have to be a whole suite of rules that the council would have to approve. And so that could be anywhere from limitations to age of RVs that we allow in, length of stay, any number of rules that we could, that we could request.
I think you're gonna get people that are high now. Vader isn't right here where everything is. Have you seen the park, Lewis and Clark Park that's over? It goes into the old road forest. They hardly have anybody camp there because there's not a lot to do. So that's, my feeling is we're just trying to city, city, city make it. And it's our little park. It's our little park that all of our families love to go to.
I think it'll still be
Well, if you don't think that anybody's going to be there, then it shouldn't make any issue at all. Because nobody will be there.
I didn't say that.
How about public input?
Bob doesn't know it's not muted.
That is the end of city business. Elected official comments. Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned at six thirty-seven PM. Thank you, everybody.